Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'll call the Nash County Board Commissioners Recession Meeting of October 27th at 2:00 towards this time. It is customary for our Board Commissioners to begin each one of our meetings with an invocation and they pledge allegiance to the flag. Here at this time, we have our invocations. You're welcome to stand in your own presence in the invocation. You're welcome to stand and have your own prayer if you'd like, or you're welcome to use it as a monitor of ours. And I will make one House comment that between each speaker today, we would have a call to have make it clean the podium if you would just up today, just a little bit to do that and to clean that with a little file of white. And I do appreciate it, everyone, this time. Our Board Commissioners, please, in the invocation, this is laying out all the members.
Good evening, members. To the Lord, as we gather together today as representatives of Nash County, we're especially thankful for the blessings and bounty that you provide each and every day. We pray for those who need your healing hand and your reassurance. Please be with us today as we conduct the business of Nash County, that you may guide and lead us to do what is right and in your will. All these things we ask in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Johnson pledged, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, commissioners. At this time, we are on item number four. Item number four is a public hearing due here of a county citizen that wishes to speak upon our two thousand and twenty proposed redistricting. We will first have a short presentation to make to tell you a little bit about this, and then we would open it up for a public hearing after we have a motion to do so. Commander Hawke, welcome back there.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. It's good to see you all, everybody. So I'll be sure. The last time we met, we brought what we've been referring to as Plan One, the original plan, and that was the starting point that our demographer put together based on the new population numbers. Since then, we've received your feedback about course priorities, the communities' interests, and thoughts about where the line should be drawn, and we come up with Plan Two C, which I believe everyone has copies of. No, I have some extra copies, and then we've got these wonderful glowing up maps all around us. I understand that Plan Two C reflects everyone's feedback about, you know, how which communities need to be put together, incumbency preferences, things like that. One thing that the demographer did was try to rebalance the districts so that they're close to what they were before. This, you know, can help the population, the consistency, can help citizens understand what we're doing, or, you know, reduces confusion from year to year. Our demographer did try and go through some orders to add, to rebalance the population in connection with any convention or errant request. I think in the end, it didn't, it didn't make a significant difference to do so, and so that's why we have Plan Two C evidence now. I'm happy to respond to any questions. Now I'll let other folks go and see.
Any questions, Commander, this time, on the order? Thank you, ma'am. Looks like we're going to say thank you, sir. Okay. All right. Well, that's it. I would entertain a motion to go to a public hearing on being listed for year 20 points. Provi- Commissioner Woodson, there's a second motion. Back by Commissioner Clay. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Johnson, I have a question. As part of the notice and everything on this public hearing, you've been given...
I would have asked you, Madam, if that's what I told you to have, please.
Yes. Actually, there, there is no requirement for a public hearing. However, and therefore, there is no ten-day requirement. This was first posted, or first noted last week, and it was in the newspaper this weekend. So, but there, this is a public hearing at the request of the chairman and other members of the board, that they just wanted to make sure that they gave the public an opportunity to be heard.
Okay. Fair. Pardon. Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question and reservation about...
Are you questioning all the motions there?
Right. About the motion for a, about a public hearing at this time. And... What, what, well, you know, you sent out an email and you said that you had discussed a certain commission and you had decided to have this hearing on the maps on this day. And, well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I was disappointed that you didn't feel the need to, in my opinion, most of us have the hearing today. And this decision involved the whole entire board, and in my opinion, the vote. My district elected me to be there once to opinion on all decisions that come before the board, and I felt like this was a full body decision, and, like I said, I was a consultant. And I, you know, do not appreciate you choosing the decision that my opinions might not be allowed in, even if we disagree. I feel like I still should be a part of the decision that I wasn't a citizen having this hearing after our meeting today. And I'm a host of the public hearing today when I consider the fadness to the public, and that's when we posted our, on our official website. That was on yesterday at 9:00 AM, and we, and they've been corporate reading of that post, which, a public hearing that he held on October 27th at 2:00 PM in Fred B. Cooper Jr.'s Administration Building in Nashville, to receive public comments and to sort of revise redistricting plans for Nash County, voting districts, boundaries for members of the board committees. And I'd like to keep that to receive public comment. Well, I would say most working-class citizens in my district anyway cannot leave their place of work with such a short 29-hour notice. And to ask the public to give their input on such a short notice is like inviting your neighbors over the day you intend to have a building, build a 20-foot wall between your property, and they're, then they're asking them to give their opinion, and they're standing on the property. That's what I see this public giving up for, and asking my fellow commissioners if they might have this hearing at a later date, hopefully, within a week or at our November first meeting.
Second, good there. If you don't mind, I would like to respond to your comment.
That's right.
First of all, my plea was that I had been asked by several commissioners to have a public hearing. I did not have any permission or what date to have it. In fact, you were the first one to ask for a public hearing, and therefore, I did it in response to your request, but not only your request, several others, because we all knew we didn't have to have this public hearing. But you were the first one to ask for it, therefore, I chose to have it. We have a deadline that was given to us, making it not a fixed deadline, but when the board election, or chairman, or when the board election tells me, this whole body, when he needs, is that what he did at our first meeting that we had on this, I think is a, a request for this board to do what they can to meet that deadline. And that deadline that he gave us was money to give him time to prepare for this, and that's the only thing that has driven this public hearing at this date. But your comments are received and respected, and as you said, we may not always agree by a survey, always want to hear from any commissioner. With that said, is any more comments on the motion on the floor?
Just one question, for clarification. Did we not note this from our October 27th meeting that we were going to have a redistricting public hearing today?
I think we probably noted that we were going to have a meeting today on redistricting. I don't think, and I could stand corrected, that we used the word "public hearing," because at that time, I was quite aware that we, we had members that wished to have it. And the first question I got, as I said, on that I heard about, was Mr. Arndt, and I don't disagree we should have it, and that's why it is today. Another comment, question? All the favor of the House, let me know when you say hi.
Hi.
Any votes for a live sign?
Vote.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in a public hearing for the redistricting for Nash County Board Commissioners, districts for the census that had just been completed, to be adjusted to do for that census. And at this time, we would like to hear from anyone who wishes to speak about this redistricting process. We would ask that you would come to the front, state your name and address, hold ready, and if you could hold your comments to about three minutes left, that would be great, because I know a couple of commissioners have a pretty high time constraint today, but we certainly won't give everyone a big chance to speak who wishes to speak. And I'll just take them as you wish to. I have one lady standing in the back, if you would come forward. I'd like to probably draw her a bit sanitized and... Good to see you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, members of the Nash County Commission. My name is Dr. Kate Nkou. I live in the Englewood section of Rocky Mountain 220, South Englewood Drive. I'm District Six of Nash County. I pay my taxes regularly and faithfully at our vote. I am disappointed with the undemocratic way that the redistricting process has been carried out in the county. We have not been provided in advance the necessary information we need, like census data that goes into how it will be done, whether it will be fair and equitable. We do not have enough time to study the new maps just recently put online. Shameful methods of recess meetings and lack of information, as well as a quick vote to avoid discussion, are being used. Why had resident input not been sought for? A public notice announcement in the Rocky Mountain Telegram would be nice after almost of the electric up on Rocky Mountain. And if it was in the Rocky Mountain Telegram, I missed it. The only thing I saw this morning was a newspaper article on the public hearing which occurred today. Rocky Mountain accounts for majority of the people in Nash County. It is my understanding that the actual deadline for submitting a final map is November 15th for elections that have been delayed because of the new census. At least there was the understanding of the deadline in the city of Rocky Mountain that I am part of. I am requesting that you consider delaying the vote for the new maps until Nash County residents have the chance to disball them. In consultation with the attorneys from the Southern Coalition for Social Justice, I believe that the 2020 census in Nash County data showed a 2.6 increase in black voting age population. Non-hispanic white voting age population is decreased by 5.2%. Redrawn map draft 2C show a pattern of packing into District Two at greater than 70%. Initial map label recommended plan or what we put as Plan One on your website show a more equitable distribution of voters, and is more reflective of the demographic trends in Nash County. There is also twice as many split precincts, 16 out of 24 in draft plan 2C, as compared to only seven split precincts out of 24 in the originally recommended plan, which is Plan One. Excessive split precincts can indicate germinary and create additional administrative burden for Nash County Board of Elections. I was just looking at a picture there of Ward of Precinct Six, and I was just amazed about how much of a dragon-like appearance it has, so I'm concerned about that as well. Thus, if given the choice and they really do have to vote today, I would prefer the original recommended plan, Plan One, for the new map. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to go through my notes on Anna D. Devlin Hyde's book, and I reside at 2724 Gary Road in the city of Rocky Mountain, Nash County. I won't be before you three minutes. I just want to ask a couple of things of you and to mention, of just a couple of things. The first thing that I had planned to mention, and the second, have already been discussed by the previous speaker, so I won't delay that one except to say, please hear the comments. We, as members of Nash County, a proud to be citizen of Nash County, and we are all working together to make Nash County a better place in which to live. I ask that you consider Plan One rather than Plan Two C for the simple reason that Plan One splits seven out of 24 districts, precincts rather, which is 29%, whereas Plan Two C splits almost double. They split more than double. It was 16 out of 24, which would be 67% of the precincts, which would be a key indicator of germinary. I ask you to, to look more closely at Plan One, that is more in line with the thinking of the community. Also, in Plan Two C, District Two is packed, and I would hope that we would try to avoid packing for the betterment of the community and for the voters. Thank you so much for your time, and I do appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Linda King. I live in District Two in Nash County, Rocky Mountain. And first, we did not receive enough notice about this meeting. We only found out a day, a day or two, that redistricting was added to the agenda for the recess meeting. Second, a version of Map 2C that we could actually access and the cost funding data was not uploaded on the website until yesterday. There is not enough time for the community to be able to review, analyze it, and provide input. Third, the necessary data was not available for the recommended plan, which has community support. The board should not vote on the redistricting plan today, but should consider our views and input. As I said, I live in District Two, which remains a packed district at 71.4%, which was also drawn at the same 71.4% in 2011, which reduces the influence of black voters in neighboring districts, and is unnecessary given the demographic trends in Nash County. And as a founder note, elected officials should not be allowed to decide who they want to represent. That power belongs to the people who exercise their right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Day.
Good afternoon, commissioners, audience. My name is Natalie Brooks, and my address is 4106 Long Road, Nashville. I reside in District Four. I think I still reside there. It wasn't clear, really, if now, if I'm still in my, say, district. But at any rate, I stand for you as a citizen of Nash County, but more importantly, I stand for you as a voting concerned citizen of Nash County. One of my concerns, as it has been reiterated, that we received, I, I received, or I looked online earlier, trying to get a map, get the plans. They were not listed, they were not posted. And then, when I looked yesterday morning, and they were there, I was astounded, because I'm sure you, each of you can appreciate having enough time to look at those maps, to look at the population, to digest it, to make sure that you have a clear understanding as to how you're, how you will be impacted. I could not, it was just not enough time. My husband and I sat down at our kitchen table, and we, we, we looked at those maps, and I mean, it took the majority, I don't think I'd even miss if I said, it was probably about 85% of our day. And you know why people ever do that? My husband and I are both retired. But what about those people who are not retired, who didn't have the luxury of being able to sit there at their tables and try to make sense out of it and see, how does this, how do these maps impact me? How do these maps impact my community? My family, even? They didn't have that luxury. And I don't, I, I would like to think that many of you wouldn't appreciate only having a day, and that's if you happened to look on the website, a day and a half, if you will. I think, I would hope you would agree that that's just insufficient time. And I understand that, that they were to define street boundaries, and it was just, it's just that my husband and I, we did the best we could with what we had. And I, I respectfully say it was insufficient for what we needed, for what we were trying to, what we were trying to clean out of. Also, I heard said that the minority, voting minority vote in Nash County increased, there was an increase. But yet, excuse me, excuse me, when looking at the map, well, the, the final draft 2C, it showed decrease in the minority voting population, in not just one district, not just two districts, not just three districts, but all seven districts. That's astounding. And it just gives me pause. How is it, I mean, if minority populace increased, how is it that the voting population of the minority vote has decreased in all seven areas? And I'd like to know, what was the exact population decrease, and by what percentage? Also, did the white voting age population increase, and if so, by what percentage? Again, all seven district districts show a loss of minority voting age, which is actually a loss of voting power. I actually reached out to a commissioner in hopes of getting something quicker and sooner, but the commissioner was unable to provide anything, so it makes me wonder why, I mean, is this one board on all the same page? I hope so. I would like to think so. But sadly to say, it wasn't until yesterday morning. I stand here as a citizen of Nash County, and I respectfully ask of the lay-in voter on the final draft map, because one day and a half is simply insufficient time to see how that, how it impacts me as a voting, as a voter, and as a citizen. I, this, this concludes what I wanted to say, but I sure, I really hope, and I, I pray that you will give careful consideration to delay. I understand that there was a, and I heard it said that by one of the presenters, that you could actually present, or you could present the maps or whatever the information is needed to the Board of Elections in November, by November. But I respectfully ask, as a citizen, that you delay the vote. Give Nash County citizens, those that work and those that are retired like me, an opportunity to look, digest, and share with their community, family, on how these maps are impacted. And then you'll have a more informed legislature. Isn't that what we all want? That's what we should all want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And then, if you have any...
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Montage Chek, and I live in Nash County. This meeting with additions, redistricting, Map 2C, and recommended data, all these additions are boats from the blue. Why on earth would you drop a bad surprise on us like this? Isn't this an age-old trick to dilute the interest and input of an interested party so as to upload, to uphold the preferences of the other interested party? I sure hope that the powers that be will not vote on the preferred map today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Have another speaker? Okay, sir. Which one are we going to pick?
He probably is getting more attention than me, actually.
Go down here, which one I'm serving. Go down there.
Thank you for having me. My name is Marcus Thompson, and I'm not a resident of Nash County. I work with Democracy North Carolina, and it's a nonprofit that, that works for voting rights, and I work in Rocky Mountain, Nash County, and it's come quite frequently. And my only message to, to you today is, I just really want to appeal to the humanity and the decency of this, of this body, in the sense that I think as a country, a lot of times, we've gotten to the place where we've divided ourselves, you know, these people and those people. We see things from, you know, boards, from our government, depending on who's in control of that government, you can respond to with a lot of mistrust off top. And then when people complain, you know, they can look at that and say, well, that's just them trying to get the political advantage and all that. And so I, I really would just ask that, as a body, please, you know, listen to the people that came to speak today, and let's not look at one another as, on both sides of this, as, you know, trying to get some kind of advantage one way or another. But if the people are saying they need more time, I feel like that's, that's an honest request, you know? I would really hope that as a, as a body and as a government, we would really start to prioritize what people are saying, you know, and not just this missed people because they might, you know, you feel like they're on the other side of you, but on both, on both sides. I would love it if, you know, the maps come out, we don't just assume that they're just trying to... I would love it if, you know, the maps come out, we don't just assume that they're just trying to give, you know, but we have real reasons to beg. Something we don't like, then you say that. Say, hey, this is why I don't like this. I, I feel like I'm trying to do this. And let's hear each other out in these, in these maps and really try to draw lines and make decisions that when we walk away from it, we can all say, well, you know what? Even if we disagree, we all try to hear each other out. We try to do the best we could to, to come to a common ground, so we can live together in this county, in this country, in this state, you know, in peace, and not always be fighting each other cat and dog, you know, that's, that's really my message. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm organized, I work with people, I love people, man, and I feel like people, if we work, if we work together in love, we can get past a lot of stuff that's, that's dividing us right now. And, uh, there's no need in Nash County, uh, to draw lines in certain way to advantage. Cause, cause, cause Nash County is gonna be Nash County, you know, I, I'm talking in general, but the people in Nash County, if you get fair maps, the, the part, if, if it's white people that dominate Nash County, white people are gonna run Nash County. And, you know, if the population increases one way or another, then that, that increase should be reflected in the government and the way things, I mean, that's just, that's the way we work. And if that happens, what you'll find is, you know, things work for everybody. If everybody feels like the government is working for them, and they have, they can come to a hearing, have their say, and that say be heard and respected, we can all move forward, whether you win or not. At the end of the day, you say, well, you know what? They heard us when they said we asked for one more time, they then just kick us up, you know, to the curb. I mean, at the end of the day, you gonna get your way as a body, you know, you have a right to do whatever you want to as a body. But if you make it citizens feel like you heard them, and at least, you know, they don't have way, I feel like at the end of the day, that's, that's all you can do, and that's all people ask me to do. So, that's very hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Montage. Other speaker?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is, uh, Robert Cordell, and I live at thirty three hundred Brooklyn Drive in Rocky Mountain. That's Ward Five, uh, City Council and District Nine School Board. Um, as the previous speakers have spoken, delay, delay, delay. That's all basically what we're asking. Whether it's fair, or whether it's gerrymandering, or just giving people an opportunity to, uh, discuss on both sides of the fence. Um, should not be perceived as a rushed adjustment. So it is all, I believe, what we're asking for is a simple delay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cordell.
Have someone else with you to speak next? Make one, one more call and then get them on up the team today, and we should speak on the public hearing. See another one. I didn't have a motion to close the public hearing at this time. Uh, vote by a figure, I'll all thank you by Commissioner Relic, I think. Okay. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lice sign? Public hearing is now closed. Is there any other discussion from the board, or any questions from board at this time? Mr. Chairman? Just for my fellow.
I was seeing the addition of results of the public hearing. I didn't hear a single one say they're faithful. The maps have been drawn. Some will say, wait, give the public further, time to digest, make recommendations. And, uh, if you're gonna have a public hearing, I think you need to listen to the people. And my suggestion is that we give a little more time.
Thanks, Mr. Cordell. Like, we did have several speakers that stated they preferred Map One. Uh, not too correctly, but I believe we did have several that, uh, made statements that they preferred Map One. Any other comments on the commission?
Well, again, I, I very much feel that, uh, hopefully we can come up with another alternative date just to hear the public, whether the public changes the minds of the majority of the commissions on the uh, matter of that commission's favor. It's not the issue, the issue is to basically hear the public and move on from there.
Thanks, Mr. Darion, uh, Mr. Coleman. If you want to make a comment before I call the voting.
No, I, I just don't see we're waiting to change anything. We've had to focus, do it forward, except just a few minor tweaks that didn't make a bit of difference in my digital interest, but I'm, I'm thinking, I don't see we're waiting to change anything.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any other comments? At this time, I didn't have a motion, uh, on the, on a resolution to adopt one of the maps.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Coleman.
I'm gonna make a motion for adoption of a resolution for Plan Two C, Commissioner District, this is proposed.
A motion on the floor, or as I said?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Relic. Uh, any questions on the motion? All in favor of motion, let me know to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lice sign?
Poo.
Okay, vote, uh, motion passes, five, two vote. The next item on the agenda, uh, that's the only item we have today is a closed session that I'll be calling the board, and the closed session is permitted by Vol. Carolina General Stat, one forty-three dash three, one eight point one one, old six to the six office is in the corner of the podium. And basically, what we would be doing is we'll have a county manager that is, so we'll retire and board that worked on for a couple of years, replacing that county manager, and the board is going to go in closed session to discuss the contract for the, uh, county manager that the board has to let you do the interview process and if the, uh, board is successful, uh, in negotiating this contract, it is proposed or agreed, the contract is proposed, we will be coming back out in open session and making that an act. And, uh, I wouldn't think it would take too long for the board to have, have the contract, uh, for, 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 I think, this would provide, of course, some, um, beautiful, I'm not sure what happened. At this time, I didn't have a motion to go in this closed session. Let's move, uh, Commissioner Woodman, sorry, by Commissioner Phil, if you have any questions on that motion. All in favor of motion, let me know to say aye. Any opposed by a lice sign?